Ready?
Yep.
Ready. Okay. So we're going to call the next meeting to order. I will tell everyone. And let's start with the flag of allegiance. Let's start with the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So wish you a statement to elect the president. I think the Christmas holiday should be wishing statements.
Right. The mission is, uh, Lakeland Joint School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally every day in all environments.
Thank you. Okay. Reports and presentations, staff reports. I want to start with the technology presentation with Chad first.
And we're following the governor's orders, so we just have 10 people at a time. I've, everyone probably already knows, but I'd like to introduce Chad Carson. And he is, there's no S in the N. And, uh-
It's a common mistake.
Com- yeah. And he is the instructional technology director for the district. He's done an amazing job. Mr. Wallace and I co-lead him in that. And I would also like to point out, just as a reminder to the board, he also volunteers and is teaching a section at Lakeland High School. Um, and we've actually, he's working on his CTE, teaching certificate, as well as being the ITD director for the entire district. So he's got a work ethic like nobody's business. And so I'm very pleased and proud to introduce Chad to you.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm here to give you a brief overview of our instructional technology department. There are many pieces to this. Obviously, as a leader, I have many people I can count on because I can't do all of them. So I am the instructional technology director. We have a network administrator by the name of Justin Grothman. Michelle Stanford is our tech integration coordinator. So Michelle's job is basically to teach technology to teachers. Uh, we have Leanne Bendel, who is our admin assistant. Paul Gallion, who handles much of the wiring, safety, security side of technology. Kenneth Richardson, who is our Chromebook specialist, which obviously that's becoming a big deal now. In fact, it's such a big deal now. We also have Lucas Hudson, who's our Chromebook technician. He's also online support. So because we have online academy now, um, he helps out with that as well. And then you have technicians that work at the, at the actual buildings. So we have Matthew Tavler, who works at Apple Elementary. Debbie Hanson from Betty Kiefer Elementary. Kevin Orenz from Garwood. Leanne Peterson from John Brown. Clayton Moore from Spirit Lake Elementary. April Mueller from Twin Lakes Elementary. Chuck Kedser. Robert is his official name. Chuck is his middle name. He works at Lakeland Senior High School, Lakeland Junior High School, and KESI. And Dan James works at Lakeland Senior High School and Junior High School. So as you can see, many moving pieces of technology. So our technology mission is through technology-related services, we prepare and support students and staff to meet the challenges of this point in history. And our vision is that technology will continue to be a vital source of information and communication within schools, home, community, and the world. We have a full technology plan of action here. I won't go through this one by one, uh, but it's here for you to take a look at it. The one thing I do want to point out, though, is we are lucky enough that one of our goals is going to be completed within six months. And one of our, and this, this plan was, um, originally to have it done within five years. So, yeah, so that's great. Technology by the numbers. So if I was giving this presentation tomorrow, my first number here would be wrong. We have 250 Chromebooks arriving tomorrow. We had 574 Chromebooks arrived last week. And we're still about 550 away. So we have about 550 that are going to arrive at the end of this month. And when those 550 arrive, we will officially be one-to-one. So that means every teacher and student in the district will have a Chromebook as their junior. Pretty excited about that.
And we're a year ahead of schedule.
Yes.
That's great.
In addition to that, we do still have some desktop computers, uh, a little over 1,200 of those. In fact, we have 259 projectors in the school district, obviously mostly in teacher classrooms. 352 wireless access points. So connecting via Wi-Fi obviously, uh, is always evolving and you're adding more of those, especially the more devices you add. 138 network switches. Almost 4,000 support tickets a year. So we have a support request form. And the nice thing about that is you can assign those tasks to the individual techs that are in that area to work on those. And, uh, we do about 4,000 support requests a year. 151 security cameras. And that number will continue to go up as well, I would imagine. 38 access controls. So those are swiped to given the building keyless cards. And 177 network-controlled HVAC units. The reason I put that up there is a lot of things that are technology now weren't technology in the past. So things like fire alarms. That used to be all handled by facilities and maintenance. And then once stuff starts connecting to a network, it gets turned over to technology. So I can't even tell you what's going to get turned over to technology, you know, five years from now, but I'm sure it's going to be more. One of the big reasons that we're able to continue to upgrade our network is E-Rate. So E-Rate was created by the U.S. Telecommunications Act of 1996. And it, it was put in place to help K-12 schools improve their technology infrastructure. The program provides a discount of somewhere between 20 and 90%. And I don't know all the metrics that go into that, but I do know free and reduced is one of those metrics. We get 70% currently, which is pretty good discount. So for the last two years, E-Rate has funded over $300,000 in liquid network upgrades. So like I mentioned, switches and so forth. So without E-Rate funding, um, the hard job will be a little harder. So here's some pictures of some technology in action. So you probably have heard of our student life conferences. So these are when students are essentially telling their parents how they're doing instead of the teacher telling their parents how they're doing. And these are just some big examples of them using technology in classroom. And I want to keep this brief because I know you guys have plenty on the agenda tonight. So that's all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions. So anybody has any questions?
I have a couple.
Yeah.
So the speed increase, I noticed it went from one gig to five gig. Was that, how did that increase take place? Was that wireless? Was that service? Was that-
Yeah, fiber.
Wire. So it was a fiber upgrade and then, okay. And then everything, then the access points and everything else were added.
Correct.
And trusty person, it also was, um, part of the E-Rate program is they extended the funding window because of COVID. And, um, because of that, we reached out to our provider for internet access and asked them what would the cost be per month.
Sure.
And we gave a 70% discount. And they said, we didn't have to re-did because we're under the umbrella of credit. And I think it's $500 a month. So $500 a month to go to that five gig. And they're putting infrastructure in that we need to do 10 gig, it just be good with electronics. So we're pretty excited about that.
Yeah, cool. Good job. When did the HVAC become network aware? Was it something that we recently did, did, or?
No, it's been, been within the last three years. So somewhat recently, but not, not just this year.
Yeah. So what, can you expound a little bit on the, the units themselves? Was it just an upgrade? Were they new units? Were they?
I believe we have some new units, but mostly it's been like, um, when you put in the new buildings. So Twin Lakes, for example, has their newer units. But, uh, it's also software upgrade, you're right. So they can remote, they can now remote into those units where previously they would, they would have to be on site essentially to program some of those.
And then I just have one last question.
Can I just tell you one thing real quick?
Sure.
That does also save us money and taxpayer dollars because if the heat gets left on or we have an extended vacation, Mike Ferriola can control those from his computer at from home. And so it, it really has saved, it is good efficiency things very useful.
Oh, yeah.
And that's fine. It's only at some of our buildings. Like, um, we, on the equipment that we're able to do, um, we did, uh, transitioned from sort of a Siemens, uh, Johnson Controls, uh, a product called Niagara, which is a more intuitive, what's not quite the one we work with. Betty Kiefer, Twin Lakes, Timberlake High School, you know, some of the newer buildings. But some of the older buildings, portions of Lakeland High School, but like a John Brown Elementary or Lakeland Junior High, we can't control.
Sure. Right. Yeah. You said earlier, you were talking about the, what was it? Nearly 4,000 help desk tickets that you guys do per year. And you said we have a form and you did this. So do you guys not have a piece of software or? Oh, okay.
Look, he did that. It's all mine.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm doing the emoji of four.
Yeah, okay.
He meant to do this.
Okay.
It is electronic.
Yeah.
Um, I have a question on the access controls. So we have swipe ports. And is it at all the schools or just?
And now it is at all schools. So Lakeland High School was the last one that didn't have one.
Okay.
And they just recently have, that was put in this summer, I believe. So, yeah, every school has a keyless entry access.
Okay. So is that more cost-effective, I would think, than like, um, having to go through a rekey a school?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if maintenance has ever really charged us, but when they handed me my grand master key, they told me it was $500 if I lose it, so.
$5,000.
Well, I, I think, uh, $500 scared me enough. I didn't want to have to pay it, so. Yeah. And then the nice thing, as, as you probably know about cards, is you can just turn, turn them off remotely.
Right.
If a card's lost, you just nuke the card, sub-ski. And no one can use that card, so.
Okay. So do our, and we'll make this more directed at you, but do all the staff have cards to get into the building?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
They have their four-digit kid, kid, uh, key, keyless entry security codes so that Justin can even track when they're entering and going and that kind of thing. And we just added this, the upgrade. One of the upgrades that you guys were talking, asking about before at Lakeland Junior High School, remember the Outback? There were those two classrooms that were in the walkway.
Right, right, right.
So they'd be pounding on to try to get back in. They added, uh, a keyless entry and it has little videos so the inside the office staff and assistants can let them in now without them pounding on the door for people.
Okay.
We just added that one this last summer.
And if we wanted to have a globally, though, we would need to add at least keyless entry on the four directions of a building.
Okay.
And we don't have that because it's, there would be a cost involved.
Correct.
But that's what we'd like to do. So then we could truly take more exterior keys away. There's no, it's a hybrid right now.
Okay.
But we're moving in that direction.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other? I would like to publicly also thank Chad. I've worked with operations team, given a couple of years notice, like we're going to add and have you do, um, like the principals do with more presentations. And I said this year, you guys have to do it this year. Chad, um, we've sort of given, put him in the give and take position. Thank you, Chad, for being the first willing to-
Well, you did a good job, so.
So thank you.
Thank you. We need to have someone listening.
Thank you, Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Chad. And next, the meeting, Mr. Wallace. The third one, right here. How long do you figure out what size you want?
And chair members of board, Dr. Meyer. So we'll have, I'll quickly go over the financial report for the month. On the revenue side, the one thing that we do have in the quarter of December is we get a November payment from a state. Sort of the formula they use, they pay us a big upfront payment in August, July. Remember, we'll get a February payment. And then we'll get a, some small payments in May. And then they screw us up as far as all this state funding in June and July. But you can see for our state revenues, we're at really overall 68, so almost 70%. So they do sort of front load us, which is a nice part of the way that they, they help fund us. But some items, like current operations, those dollars don't come till the very end of the year. So we sort of have our fund balance to help fund, you know, those costs. But, you know, you can see that we haven't received much officially property taxes yet this year, but that should change by the January report. You know, as we start getting that information from the county and the transfers as people are paying their taxes this month. But I'm going to actually go over some of the property taxes here in a little bit. On the expenditure side, we're actually, we're tracking, well, the budget. You know, we're at about 30% officially in the budget, but, um, you know, our salaries and benefits last three months is really right where we should be. And in fact, if you look historically, um, we're actually tracking a little less than we were previous years. I think some of that, some of our spending has been shifted to some of the, uh, COVID dollars. So that's part of that anomaly. But even without that, we're, we're tracking where we should be. So overall, I mean, our, our concerns are not on the expenditure side. Really, our concerns are on the revenue side. And we'll have, we don't really know any impacts at the state level till February. But that's where the beta concerns would be. Our fund balance, if we compare, is $1.5 million better than it was last year. And some of that is prior to spending down a little bit. We just received the revenues and, and how expenses come in. But, you know, overall, we did have, we did end the year last year higher than years. That should be up a little bit. Eventually, that will come down, be closer to, you know, this $5.3 million at the end of the year. This part of the year, we're always in better shape because of that front funding by the state. And again, as you know, just the charts, um, by function, and we're right where we should be. Just graphically, you see we're about a third, um, of the way through. And that's on the continuum. And so that's good, that we're tracking well. Some of our areas that get charged at July as opposed to September when we really started hitting the big costs are a little farther along the continuum, but still doing fine. And by object, it's sort of the same thing. We're right about a third of the way through with our salaries and benefits. And that's what shows in our other items that supplies and materials actually are quite a bit less than what would be a typical year because of the stimulus dollars in charge into those federal. One thing I, oh, let's quickly go here as you can see the hole. For the enrollment report, we are up, you know, from last month of 16 students, but we're down to 142 if we compare from last year. That's sort of the pattern that we've seen. But, you know, we're sort of getting a few kids back. And since they'll be doing attendance this year as opposed to home, and hopefully that won't hurt us too bad as far as funding. And again, it's just interesting to see it by grade where it's kindergarten. And you can see like the third grade, the sixth grades sort of across the board. But definitely the elementary is where we saw most of those and a lot of that kindergarten where I think parents just deferred maybe for a year, given COVID. But in December, of course, all of us got that home property, got our tax assessment. And so I just wanted to quickly show, um, a bill. And so I was fair, this is my bill. So, you know? And just sort of show the difference between this year and last year. And so the first one I'm showing, this is actually last year's bill. And you can see that my, my taxable value of my house is 212,135. So that means the assessor says it was worth $312,000 with the homeowners accepting exemption. And it has, you know, all the different rates of all the taxes. And I live in the city of Rattler, so, you know, I have those. But, you know, ours specifically, you know, last year, if you look, Pete, you know, based on our rate and how much we collected, you know, the bond was $140. This is just our torque levy, that one really small little levy that statutorily helps pay for part of our liability insurance. Effectively, that's where it goes. And then the supplemental here, this is a combination, just so you know, both our plant facility levy and our supplemental levy. This county, I think, runs out of real estate on their software, so we get three lines or the three rows. So that, that's a combination. But overall, I, I paid $2,914. And, you know, you can see our, our big cost of the 593 and then, of course, our bond. This year, you can see, so my value of my house was 230 now, so it's a 330. And so according to the county, my house only went up about 7%. So I don't think they went and did the full evaluation, but obviously it went up some, and I'm not sure how they did the form, but I went up 7% as far as the value of my house. But if you look first in the bond, you know, that was 140, it's down to 78. So the bond collections, you know, the rate's quite a bit less. And, and part of that reason is that because we did the bond deficits and to start trying to pay off our bonds earlier, we're collecting a million dollars less in real dollars than we did last year. So obviously, that, the rate had to go down because we're just asking for less money there. And that's allowing us to really have the rate go down faster than if we didn't do the deficits. So, um, you know, with our, we're starting to pay off those bonds and, and they're there for another three or four years, but then they'll be paid off. So that, that rate will continue to be a little bit less. Won't have quite such a dramatic drop, but next year I'll be collecting a little bit less than I did this year. You can see the turrets about the same. And then, so go down our supplemental. And, you know, again, this is our plant facility and our supplemental. And we're collecting the same dollar amount on those overall from this. And you can see that, but I'm going to ask for 545 instead of the 590, 593. And the big reason for that is really everybody's, you know, house values went up. But I think that, you know, sort of 50 bucks, that's sort of showing that new construction growth. There's more people helping pay that same dollar amount. So existing people are getting a little bit less on that one is probably the best example. But overall, you can see my tax bill instead of 2,900 is 26, almost, 25,97. So that's a reduction of $316.40, which is 11%. I'm paying 11% less than I did last year. But if anybody asks you about the property tax, I just want to, like, I just thought it'd be good to go over that this is the bond, this is that small torque levy. But the other two levies we have, supplemental and the plant, aren't that one line. And that's why this rate isn't quite, but we're showing you some because it's a combination of two rates, effectively, when we show it. And if we had an emergency levy, I can't remember where that goes. It might go on other, or it might go here. But at least this form, unless the county changes the way they do it, doesn't change.
Right.
But, um, I sometimes do this if I get a call from a patron, ask him about their taxes and I'll go before I call him, because I can go find it, right? I'll go with the previous year and, and I might try to see, well, do the taxes go up because of their assessed value? Did they just really jump crazy? Or, you know, does the rate go? Or sometimes, you know, maybe a mistake was, you can sort of check.
Right.
But that's, I thought that'd be good just to, so, you know, this time of year, it's obviously, you might get some questions on that. Give you a little information. And that's all I have for this month. Available for any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
More on slide six.
So the first thing in following up from last meeting, we talked about, um, which high schools, which seniors would need a waiver for the senior project. So I followed up with that. And the only group right now is Mr. Uzzy would like to ask for the senior project graduation requirement for online Plato High School program, that they be allowed a waiver this year. It's just difficult to have the research paper and the oral presentation, not knowing what the circumstances are with those families. So he would like to ask for the board to approve a waiver for that. That's later on the agenda. But if you have any questions for me about that?
So this is for just the online high school? So the other high schools and Mountain View still do their?
All three wanted to continue to do that with their seniors. The board clerk position, uh, the feedback I'd like from the board, we did open that position. I did share with the board that the amount of responsibilities for one person at this point to have the clerk and have the executive assistant and the community relations and all of the PR and transparency, all the communications we're trying to do through social media. We haven't been able to keep up with the website as well as I'd like to as well. Of course, she's working too many hours for what she's supposed to. So I'm having to try to tell her to not, uh, work so many hours. But to be able to do both things effectively, I would like to start the discussion about the board clerk position. We did open that to, uh, we have six applicants already in that position. It's a halftime that we advertised it. The board can certainly upper that or lower that, change the job description if we, if they want to. But I guess the one thing I'd really like to know from the board is, are we having a goal to hire and appoint? Because in, when you have your annual January meeting, your annual meeting in January, appointing it, there was some discussion that people talked about, you know, maybe appointing somebody and not hiring. So I'd like to have the board's feedback on this. And if the board wants to have a goal to have somebody hired, then I'd like to talk about the pre-screening committee. Following the HR protocol, we have with the pre-screening committee where the board would get together and pre-screen, look at the non-list references, say if there's any pre-reference checks, what qualities you're looking for. Just go through that process together. Anybody on the board who wanted, if all wanted to do it and myself sit down and go through, it'd be kind of fun to have the board go through the actual process as well. Like this is what we do when we do our hires, from all the way from the job description to the pre-screening, to the, how we look at the references and do that ahead of time first. And then how we do the interview committees, what committees we've done, what the interview banks, question banks are we do, the writing samples. Anyway, just it, I'm not on the timeline that I'm trying to impose, but I did know that there was talk. Wondering if that was going to be done by the January. So if the board wouldn't mind giving the input on, on that, I would be appreciative for that.
Thinking maybe I could try to get that done harder for that January meeting if possible.
And are you-
It'd be a smoother transition because everything changes in January.
Um, are you thinking it's a, or how does everyone else feel about, is it a halftime position? Or are people thinking, I know there was some discussion about, um, that might be less or more different. Do you have thoughts about that?
I think maybe the question would go to the current clerk just to ask, how many hours do you believe someone will be putting into this since you're presently doing that?
Well, Chrissy, before you-
Your fairies, everybody, go ahead.
Before you interject on that. I guess one of my concerns is, are we hiring a board clerk position that their sole position would be the- are we hiring a board clerk position that their sole position would be the board clerk? Or are we hiring someone who's going to be the board clerk and then some? Because if there's an end then some, then I think it's a bit deceptive to position somebody for a board clerk position and then all of a sudden now you're everything else. And it, I'm not against multitasking or using people above and beyond their skills. But I don't think it's appropriate for us to say, we need to hire a board clerk, we need a part-time person, X, Y, Z, and then they come in and then, oh, by the way, now you get to do PDQ. And I just, I don't appreciate that aspect. So, but I do know that we like to use our resources, so.
I guess my feeling about that trustee Thompson is I would hope that this person, my vision for it, and again, the board, this is the board's. I mean, I want the board to give me input. I'm not trying to say my, part of my vision though, is that this person would be not only the board clerk, but help with the policy pieces. Because as trustee Grissom and you have brought up, that's like governance is the number one thing is policy. And trustee Grissom's brought up a couple of times, there are policies that have not been updated since like forever. And I feel like we're out of compliance for some of those, but we're doing as many as we can. We had a superintendent's meeting online yesterday. There, like Bonner's Ferry is bringing 20 to 50 board policies per month their board is. And I'm like, oh, my room is crazy, but we can't do that with our, so I feel like we could step up in that. But I do feel like in, correct me if I'm wrong Chrissy, but I feel like board policy would go under the clerk because that would be working with the board, doing the agenda and doing the policy. So I don't think it'd be another PDQ thing added. I don't foresee anything added unless you do, that would be added to the clerk's position. I just think that it would be flexible because there are nights where you have board workshops or meetings, but then the next week you don't. So you may flex like in a two-week period, you may have 40 hours with the two weeks and not, you know what I'm saying? It might not be just be 20 and 20.
No, no, and I, I would anticipate that anything that the board is involved with, the clerk would be involved with. So, I mean, respecting that on the policy committee are two board members and the clerk. So I mean, I, I, what I'm saying is, are we going to hire someone and then they're going to fill in as the receptionist? Or are they going to, you know, help out at one of the elementaries that need help at that specific date, time and place? So that's what I'm saying is, are we hiring someone to multitask for our district? Or are we hiring a board clerk position?
My vision for it, and again, I haven't asked any of you, this is your opportunity to speak, all of you. But my vision would be that that's what Chrissy would be. She is going to do the other, if somebody needs help, getting our website, getting our Instagram, our Facebook transparency, getting information out, getting more parent involvement. It's definitely been heard, I think, on her position with the parent phone calls and things I've talked about with the COVID pieces. And then doing PR pieces on top of us trying to be transparent and forward proactive. And then being an assistant for Patty and myself and Lisa and the DO team, pretty much office supervisor. And then also clerk, I just think it is, it is the point that our district is, that the size that we are and how much we're growing and everything that's coming at us, it's too much for one person. So my hope would be that this clerk would be just the clerk of the board. And they wouldn't be pulled into multitask with other things. If for some reason we got a windfall and some, all of a sudden, there's this huge community that goes and all of a sudden we've increased or something's happened, that would have to go back to this board saying, hey, this position's changed. Would you be willing to look at adding something to this clerk position? But as of right now, my hope would be that it would be just a clerk position. With the focus on our board agendas and definitely policies and getting some goes up to that speed.
None of the other traditional parts that come into that are that records custodian.
Right.
Your public records request, that all stays as the traditional.
Right, clerk responsibilities.
That's why I say, I say it varies. Weeks are so different.
Depending on the.
Definitely the week of our board meeting is full of board stuff, so it varies.
So how would we structure?
So I guess, could everyone get, I don't want to put people on the spot because maybe people need time to think about it. The only thing is, and again, we can talk about this later, if it's not imperative, if the board isn't feeling side, I sort of did the backward by design. If we want to get somebody in by our annual board meeting so that that person can be appointed, you know how you appoint? The treasurer and the board chair and then all of that and the clerk. If we wanted to get somebody in by then, we do already have six applicants. And I thought, well, we could move forward and having, and I'll invite everyone to come to a pre-screening and then talk you through what we do and you guys have input as well. But what do we want is our different interview pieces? Do we want a writing sample? Do we want them to look at an agenda? How would you, you know, there's a lot of ideas out of my mind. And then each of you probably have ideas on how we would interview this person and different tasks, questions we would ask. And so if you go through that, set up interview team and timeline for that, I would be all in favor of that. But if, if the majority of the board is saying, uh, let's just wait, we could slow it down. I just again, want to caution the board about us getting ready to get a lot of PR out to the public for the upcoming instructional levy.
I think ideally we'd like, love to have somebody by January, but what if we just moved forward on this pre-screening committee interview team and established all those things? And then, and I don't remember what the statute says about the clerk of the board as far as, you know, they do, are we under timeline to appoint in January? And does, I know it's very clear on treasurer and if we don't have a treasurer, how we get a treasurer? But I'm not sure about the clerk, I, I didn't go look.
The clerk's the same, they appoint in January, but I did start in January. I was thinking, I mean, it can be, can they, if it was a February or March? I mean, I'm sure there's only way for that if you have to appoint somebody, a new person. Then if you appoint me in January and somebody else in February or March. I don't think there's anything that says you can't do that.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering if there is something that prohibited us from.
I like that idea. Would the, would the majority of the board be willing to participate in a pre-screening committee? If I put it out there to ask for schedules and I can use that Google calendar and find a time, Chrissy can help me find a time where the majority of, or all of you could come and we can start that pre-screening. Pisa, and I feel like it would be a good learning thing for me to say, this is how we do our interview process. And then we can have different ideas about this one. And even if it didn't finalize by January 12th, at least we've started on that path. I really like that idea.
I think that's important to do and I, I mean, I don't want to drag it out because I really do feel like Chrissy's overexending herself and I don't, I mean, nobody can do that for a sustained period of time. It's going to start impacting other areas and that's not fair. So I just would say for no other reason other than that, it, it makes sense to kind of get the ball rolling and, and start down the path. Plus, I don't know how long these people are going to wait to know if, if they're going to be hired or not. I mean, no, they might move on and try something else and then we lose a great candidate. So I think it's a good idea to get the ball rolling. I do have one question. How did we get here to hiring a board clerk?
So I, several board updates and then also in executive session, we talked about, obviously can't say.
Okay, yeah.
But we did talk about it as a board, an executive session, that need to move forward with separating responsibilities because it was too much for one person. So then I said, well, rewrite the job description and separate the two. And so then the next step was to separate the job descriptions.
Right.
Which need board approval. So we went to that piece and then putting the next step out there of separating it, so posting it.
Right, right. Yeah, I remember all that, I just don't know how we came about that. Well, I guess so we're hiring, so then there would be two positions then eventually that we would be hiring for.
So if we, if with the HR protocol, if you have somebody in a position and then that position gets too much, then you legally can, for the fair human HR, you can actually separate the position. And the person who had that position can choose which position, then you have to legally open up the other one.
Gotcha, okay.
Which we've had to do in other positions before throughout the district. If they're like an admin assistant or something, a para, something gets too big, then that's how that happens.
Okay, okay, okay. I get it now. So that was basically something that Chrissy decided that this was the other thing that she would rather do than the board clerk. Gotcha, okay.
And not to speak for her, but she did share that, and just not to brag about her too much, but I can say this, that she does have a master's in organizational leadership and adult education. Like she does, she has a master's degree in things that the, the position that she's wanting to stay in is really, I mean, that's, and we kind of learned that in our strength finder job today. She's really good at those pieces that goes together with that job. But it was nothing that I decided, it was all in the employee's decision to decide that and that.
Yeah, well, they, what you just explained about the HR thing, I, I didn't have that information, or at least I don't remember that.
No, you're, I don't know if I explained it that way, so I'm glad you asked.
Okay.
But it is the employee's decision at that point.
Okay.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes, in response to trustee Grissom's comment about when we appoint the clerk. According to statute, we just hold an annual meeting. There's no requirements with, of the annual meeting within statute. However, under our policies, policy number 1200, it specifically states that in January, we appoint the clerk and the treasurer and the chair and the vice chair. However, it does state that if a position becomes vacant, then we need to appoint immediately. So based on that language, I would assume it means if we can't appoint by the first meeting, then when we hold the second meeting, then we need to appoint. If we can't do it then, then we need to, I mean, we, we need to be expeditious on this. But I, there's nothing, there's no requirement by statute that says have to do it on this specific day.
Okay.
So there is a little bit of grace, I think, in the sense that I don't think we should operate without a clerk. I think we should have a clerk, they're very valuable for us. But if we can't. We'd have to draw on brains because I don't see volunteers. Well, they are on Zoom, so you could just, you know, we could just do it by transcribing, I'm familiar with that. But that being said, there is, our policy gives us a little bit of grace in the sense that it does state at the gen, at the very first meeting, we are to elect a clerk. And that if there's a vacancy, it needs to be filled immediately. So however we interpret that immediately is, is what we need to do.
So I'm going to, I'm going to go forward with doing the pre-screening. I'm going to have Chrissy help me with schedules to try to have as much board that can be there for that process, for everyone to participate in. We'll set up the pre-screen and then we'll go to the next step as a group. That's what I'm going to do for the next piece.
And to add to that, I think you start the process. And if we're not prepared to appoint a new clerk on January 12th, we appoint Chrissy as the clerk because we still need to have the clerk and the treasurer.
I would agree.
And then when we finally determine what's going to happen, she'll like, we get the position and we will by policy be required to immediately appoint a new clerk.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Or paired.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I feel much better, that's perfect. I do want to say we had a huge honor. I was a, was a high school principal for 13 years. One time, one time when I was a high school principal, I tried every year to get this sportsmanship. It means it is the huge, one of the biggest honors bestowed in our state for a school, biggest honors. Not only did they win the state champions for the first time in like 30 some years. Good job, Kelsey. She's our student with disabilities director, interim director. But this is a huge honor, they got the sportsmanship award. I put the letter in there, but I just want to say an independent, I just want to read this out loud very quickly. At this year's tournament, an independent committee judged all of the tournament coaches, participant, administration, spectators, including parents and other representatives from your district. Each school was evaluated on important behaviors that are guiding principles of sportsmanship and citizenship. And Lakeland High School was a true example of a positive school culture and community with pride. This is a huge honor and I just don't know if people recognize people in the public and people just, everyone should recognize, this is really a big deal for our district. And it's a, it's a very big honor. This is something we talked about in the family field and how compassionate people are in this district and how respectful. People that interact with our students, I mean, we have new teachers. Ms. Sexton and I have teachers in our protege who come from different districts. They're constantly talking about this exact thing, how respectful our students are. It makes me so proud, I just, this is a really big deal.
That's awesome.
It is really good, so congratulations to that team. And then to Lakeland High School, good job. And good job for one of the other coaches at Lakeland High School, Bradery. I would like to keep every single levy information on every single board update because as we wind down to update you, I want, these are quick things to show you. And we can certainly always discuss more, but I want to make sure to give the board some quick updates. And then you guys can slow me down if you want to ask more information. So thank you to Chrissy. Brian, Lisa and I came back together, you know, we did the presentation for the school board, but you asked several questions, we wanted you to. We did not want anybody on the staff with me to have to watch a longer presentation than they wanted to. So we redid the entire presentation and it's, this has got it down to 19 minutes. Then you're going to, I've learned something, I learned something at ISBA conference that you do mini-video, they call infomercials, they're individual little infomercial mini clips. So that we're going to title them, when Brian talks about the tax bill, interpreting your tax bill. It'll be between, all of them will be under two minutes. So there's just these small little clips. I'm going to talk about the why, why do we do this? How did the tax, property taxes go from the property tax to local, why did that happen? I talk about that piece. Brian talks about the community, the value, the surrounding districts. And there could be little, let's have little mini clips. So that people can go directly to something or they can watch the whole presentation. Because of the governor's orders right now, we can't go into and have our big community meetings, which we're hoping that we can still get to that before March, but in the meantime, to try to get the facts out there. We would like to also ask that the board be doing, each board member be willing to do a clip. And you can talk about what it means to your constituents, you can talk about anything you want. I'm not saying you have to, it just has to be factual. Because we can't do anything on the website that is like, vote yes, you can't say anything like that. Or this is why we have to have you vote yes or anything like that. But we'd like to have all five board members report a clip and she will be asking you about that. Tonight, the resolutions is tonight, we need to approve that resolution tonight. We have the language and spirit, Wallace is going to go through that. Our first factual mailer we have, just to show the board, it says save the date. Has the date of it, it tells you that it's a replacement instructional in, in, as Mr. Wallace said on the tax bill, it says supplemental levy. This is on one side. The other side says the levies provide essential support for, and these are the main things that are, that we've talked about. It's giving an overview, we're not getting into the weeds, we're not promising, overpromising or anything. Just the school safety and security, small neighborhood schools, extracurricular athletics, technology, continuing the current programs, services and staffing. To date, and then just for more information on the website. So it's just really, a really quick thing going down. I can, we just, I want to get this out before we get to holiday break because I feel like normally we would start to be talking about it, but with all of COVID, I'd already be out doing staff meetings, I've had to cancel all of the staff meetings. And we're going to go to the video clip with question and answers where we set up Ryan and I, or they will go for the staff that way. But this is the first just PR awareness campaign, I guess, or facts that are going out. So I want to show that to you. And then also here on this, once that goes away, there's a county, the election office and the timeline, which shows you all the things that have to take place and you'll see all of that in there. Any questions on that?
Suggestion?
Yes.
On the man, I put the date on the front. That's where it is on the little guys, I thought that was really much.
Oh.
Yeah, but that is good, but that's good to. Yeah, but that is good, but that's good to.
I saw it there, and I'm like, wait, they didn't graduate in January? It was in June.
No, that's, this.
Yeah.
So here.
Oh, yeah, I didn't even see that, but I see the old yellow.
Over here and save the date being over here was so close.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Yeah, that's great. Actually, you know, it's great to have different perspectives of that. I did see some, you're like, maybe you should move that right here, but that was, that's good.
Okay. The date white on the very first one, not the, oh, yeah.
Because when it prints, you're not getting, the eyes not gonna grab that.
Yeah, because I didn't even see it.
Right.
So I'm like, put the date on the front.
Okay, any other questions about that, or I'll bring updates every board meeting. Mr. Wallace has our, um, requests for bids, RFBs, traditional proposals, proposals, and now we have a new one, request for bids. This is new information I learned. Mr. Wallace is discussing that on the agenda. But I did want to put this back in. This was the presentation that Lisa, Brian and I did last board meeting. And I wanted to put that back on there, because it has the map and the different things we had talked about, the middle school lineup. So this is in here, if we want to reference back to it, we need, when that's on the agenda. And then really, this is the last piece of my update. In the reopen plan, these are the things I would like to have board approve on. The extracurricular piece, bus transportation, updated guidance to reduce the quarantine, quarantine, contact tracing and resource links. So I'd like to just quickly show those to you, and then you can ask any questions you'd like. I just wanted to give you an overview. And I highlighted them in the nice pea green color. So the first thing is, in all this, in green, yellow and orange, I've added follow established Idaho High School Activities Association and, and then I added four board approved district guidelines. Because the way it was written, it sounded as if we just had followed what IHSAA said. And I feel like there might be board actually leaving, who decide to go above or beyond that, so I added the and and. I know you did get a lot of printer and comments. I got several, and I asked them, please forward their opinions on Chrissy, so that the board can see them, or I would forward them. I do want you to know that the IEL, I know, I put this into your board communication, but the board, the IEL and the IML. So Lakeland High School part of the IEL for eight and Timberlake High School part of the IML for three eight. They have decided unanimously that they are going to have 10, each up to 10, because the participants, the game clock, all of those people don't count against it, and so they are going to allow 10 on each side. And they started that this week. I have both high school principals on the line with us, in case you would like to ask either of them their opinion or questions about that. I just wanted the board to be able to ask some questions if you want to do anything different than what the leads have decided. Would you like to take this one at a time, or do you want me to go through the whole thing? The changes. Okay, so does anybody have questions on this extracurricular? And if so, I have both comprehensive high school principals respond with me.
So that's based on governors.
So just want to make sure the board's okay with them. They already started it because based on the league, but I hope it was coming to the port tonight.
Well, with respect to the fact that there is a mandate about not having more than 10 people gathered. My frustration with that is you go out into the public and you go to Costco, and there's 900 people in the Costco warehouse. Or you go to the Super One, and, you know, everybody's doing their grocery shopping. Um, respecting social distancing boundaries, et cetera. I think it is extremely frustrating to have an enormous gym and say it can only hold 10 people, 10 spectators, let me clarify that. Not that I'm all about always booking the system, but I, I don't see the reason behind that when the bleachers can adequately allow two parents per child to sit in the stands and watch their kids, be it their senior year or their eighth grade year. I don't care. I'm not trying to make this about, you know, supporting only one grade level. But I just, I don't see the reasonableness in it, given that, you know, how many kids are on a basketball team? It just, I don't understand the logic behind it. I do understand that wrestling has far more when it comes to team bodies. I mean, there's, there's a lot of kids that do wrestling, which is phenomenal. So I don't know if that would then be encouraging on not being allowable to socially distance. I have no idea. But when I think about winter sports, I think about basketball, and I know that those teams don't have 20 to 30 to 40 kids on them.
Can you have the controls to address that, so about the wrestling versus the, because I'm not sure if all that works with the wrestling mats? Um, because the participants are usually up in the stands.
Okay.
Um, and they're not down by the mats.
But I also don't want to speculate and say only one sport can, one sport can.
Right.
So. Yeah, no, no, that would not be, that's not my goal here. I just, I only think about basketball, but I also know that wrestling is a full force too, so. And I'm, I don't know much about wrestling yet.
So I'm gonna caution you to only talk one at a time, because there's echo. Um, so I'm gonna unmute my sound as soon as it lets us ask a question, I'll mute my sound. So Mr. Derek or Mr. Everland, can you please address this question? Hold on, guys. They're both. So they should all be right here. There's, there's my ceiling for you now. All right, guys, you're free to talk.
There we go. I think we're there.
Yep.
All right, good. Hi, everybody. I, I, I was able to listen to the questions. I'll, I'll try and answer them as, as best I can. I guess the first thing I want to say is, you know, our goal, you know, ultimately, we'd love to have the, the stands full. I mean, that's, that's what makes extracurricular activities so phenomenal. But obviously, we can't do that in this particular environment. Extracurricular activities are a little different animal than just, you know, the, the aspect of the control that we have within a district and the fact that you're playing other schools. So the cooperation of a league, I think, becomes really critical. So when we meet with other league schools and we listen to their proposals and, and what they would like to do, you know, the, the, of making sure that we are respectful of one another and doing what others teams want, or other schools are, are, suggesting becomes important. I don't know if you know, but last Friday, there was four counties down in southern Idaho where there was a vote where they were seriously considering stopping all sports in that part of the state. That vote got table till tomorrow, so I don't know exactly what they're gonna do in those four counties. Those four counties are Ada County, Valley County, and there's two other counties, but basically involves 17 schools in the IHSAA. So from our standpoint, I was talking to Mike Federico of the Idaho High School Activities Association. He's one of the executive direct, directors. I said, Mike, what, what's on the horizon from the state's standpoint? Because our number one goal, and I think the number one goal from the school district, is we want to make sure that our students can continue to compete in extracurricular activities. We think that's super important. Not only, you know, just from an athletic standpoint, but just from a structural standpoint where students, you know, have that consistency, that's super important for us. So we don't want to jeopardize that. And one of the things he said, he says, even if those four counties vote to discontinue all athletics, he didn't think the IHSAA would do anything, but he said if another part of the state did, there's a real potential that the IHSAA would jump in and say, we're gonna cancel all extracurricular activities. So it's a little bit of a tightrope that we're walking, you know, from a standpoint like was mentioned, you know, you know, in this meeting that, you know, you get a gym, and I understand it holds 1,800 people. And, you know, the reality, we could certainly social distance, you know, 10 people or 20 people in that gym. I, I mean, I know that could happen. But from the standpoint of when you're dealing with other schools, you know, you're competing against other schools, and we have to cooperate with those other schools as well. And so, for example, Moscow, you know, even having any people in the stands is a huge push in that district. So if we were gonna play Moscow and we have stands and our people in the stands, they've agreed upon the 10 because of the governor's orders, but if we were to go beyond that, I'm not saying that we would, or Moscow would or would not play us, but it would jeopardize that particular competition. And we just don't want to jeopardize competitions with our students. So it's, it's, it's a little different animal than what we do just locally within our own schools. It's because we're dealing with other school districts as well. And in light of that, we, we did agree as a IEL board, just a couple of days ago, we met again. We meet weekly to try and navigate this particular, uh, you know, landscape. And, um, you know, all of us agree that we want to move forward with at least allowing 10 people per, per, per event or per team in order to go to the gym. Now, that was a big stretch just to get to that as a league. And there was a lot of discussion. In fact, it was an hour and 20 minute meeting, and that was our primary question that we were dealing with. So it, it's not an easy, um, it's not an easy thing to navigate when you're dealing, in our case, with the IEL, seven other, or seven schools total. Uh, I know the IML deals with four schools total, uh, but we're trying as best we can to make sure that we don't jeopardize competitions for our students. We want to make sure that they can still, at the league level, we want to make sure that they can still compete at the regional and state level. And I'll be honest with you, it's very tenuous at this point. The IHSAA is meeting tomorrow, so we'll find out if they're gonna give us any more guidance from, from the state office as the executive committee of, of extracurricular activities. We'll see what they say. Obviously, the governor's gonna, it sounds like he's gonna speak on Friday. Uh, I don't know if there's gonna be additional requirements at that point. But I, I think, you know, as frustrating it is, as it is, we, we just want to be very, very cautious from the standpoint of, we want to make sure that we don't jeopardize, you know, our, our students' abilities to compete. You know, I just heard this, this evening, there was a wrestling tournament that was in Kellogg that was canceled. It was canceled because of what that particular school policy was, and they didn't want to host that. So whether that can be transferred to another school, we don't know. We're looking at possibly hosting it at our school so that we can have our kids compete. But that's the animal that we're dealing with, is the fact that we have to compete against other schools. Obviously, we don't want to be an intramural program. We want to be a, you know, an extracurricular, you know, interscholastic program. And so as a result, we have to work with these other schools. I think it's really important that we, uh, we listen to each other. We hear what they have to say, uh, and we're given our input. We are moving towards trying to increase the number of stu, of, of parents that can be in the gym. Possibly by the end of the week, if the IHSAA doesn't give us any more restrictions, or Governor Little, or doesn't add any more restrictions as well. I think as a league, we're gonna move forward towards that as early as Friday. Uh, so we're moving as quickly as we can, but also in light of the fact that we're dealing with, you know, in this case with the IEL and the IML, a total of 11 schools that we have to dance with, so to speak, you know, in this particular situation. So I hope that kind of gives you a, some context as far as what we're up against. But, uh, man, we're aware. I know it's frustrating for parents. It's frustrating for students. We'd love to get students in the gym. We think that's such a big part of extra, of just the school experience, and we can't do that, which is frustrating, but, uh, but we're definitely trying our best so that we can keep our kids competing. But I don't know if Tim Cronely or, or, you know, Ryan or Mike that are on there says, well, if they need to add anything, they're certainly welcome to do that. Or if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to try and answer.
I think the board has a few questions. I do want to say, um, real quickly to this point about other students. The entire Region One superintendent's group, similar to what we say, agreed to let JV teams, when they're traveling, they bring one bus. They can't afford sometimes, like plumber really can't afford buses, and instead of JV, we did allow, tell them they're allowed to have their JV team stay socially distanced in the gym, the younger team. We did say that as a whole region, we agreed to that. So I want.
Before, I just, a couple more things from, this is Ryan Everland, principal of Timberlake High School. And I'm the Region One president for the principal, so we talk quite a bit. And just to echo Trent's point, we have, this has been a conversation several hours a day and all through the night. And, uh, you know, uh, uh, there was a few schools today, and they didn't come right out and say they won't play us if we don't do that. But that was basically the message I heard. So, um, you know, that's nerve wracking, but then there's also the referees. There's conversations of some referees that don't want to come into a gym if we're not following. Oh, it's not enjoyable. We want our parents there. Our parents are great, and, uh, we're just, we're trying to go in for our student athletes.
Um, do both high school gymnasiacs have the ability to video the games so that parents can watch online?
Oh, that's a loaded question. We, we put in, we do. The, the short answer is yes, and the long answer is not very long either. But, but, uh, we do have what's called the National Federation of High School Sports Network. And we have a camera in the gym. I'll be honest with you, it's been super glitchy. It, it's at no cost to the district, so it's not something that we have to pay for. But it's an expensive camera, and we've done it with an idea that we'd have a long-term relation with, that relationship with them. When it works, it's great. When it doesn't work, it frustrates the heck out of you. So what we've done at Lakeland is we've always put in a backup now, and our Booster Club, they do a Facebook Live filming of the games. So we always have something going on so that parents can, can watch the game. But, yeah, it, it's not perfect, but it's, 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 uh, it's functional.
Is the tech department not able to make the camera effective?
Well, the, the camera, it, it's a really, it's actually like a non-man camera. It's, it's mounted up on the wall. And it's super, um, it's, it's pretty advanced, in fact, that it follows the ball. And the National Federation of High School Sports, they actually have a website. They turn it on when the game starts and they turn it off when it's over. And, and so we don't have hardly any, um.
Control.
We, we just don't have any support locally for it. It's all done remotely. And, uh, their, their service is, is a little frustrating. I mean, we, we have to do all of our communication with them through text. And their texting is sometimes a little slower than what I'd like to have them be, but.
Mr. Everland, do you have the capacity to do that at Timberlake High School for basketball and wrestling?
Yes, and it's gone really well at Timberlake. Um, we, we were fortunate to have it installed a little sooner, so we worked out some glitches, but it is hard. You have to make a connection with, uh, someone there, and then there's, there's glitches, good, and Spirit Lake.
Okay. Do you have a backup plan, Mr. Everland, such as Lakeland has stated they have the Booster Club doing what they do to Facebook Live?
Yeah, we're able to Facebook Live any, any event we need to. And back to the wrestling question that trustee Thompson asked about spectators. We haven't fully addressed how we're gonna do that yet, if, if it's still a limit of 10. You know, we talked about weight classes, you know, certain parents for weight classes, and then uh, back in the day, you used to just wrestle, you know, starting at 98 all the way through the heavyweights, and now they do it in a mixed order. But we. But we talked about going back to that traditional, so, so parents know when their kid's going to wrestle, so they'd come in the gym, they'd watch them. And then we'd have to rotate them out. Um, we have a wrestling tournament coming up, we talked about how in the world do we do that? That'd be a situation where we'd have to Facebook Live and also use our NFHS camera. Um, we're able to do all those things and, you know, back to your point about, uh, logic, I mean. I think we all, we all feel you on that, I mean, it's. There's a lot of things that are really confusing and I think what makes this one especially hard though is there's so many outside entities. That also influence how we, uh, take care of business, you know, as far as the operations of the school, nobody. Has a say in that except you guys and, 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 and that's great, I mean, I think the year's gone really well, but when it comes to bringing in outside. Schools and working with them, it, it just, and we have the IHSA, we have the Governor's Office. You know, we have the Region One Association and we're lucky because Trent's on the Board of Control. And so he's part of a lot of meetings and, uh, he's the first to know a lot of things, so he can let us know, but. It's a really complicated situation, I mean, one thing I do want to say on here. Um, our parents have been, uh, voicing their concerns and we've talked a lot. And everything, everything they're bringing to us is, they have some really, really good ideas and so. I also think, and I know Lakeland High School is working with their parents, I think if we continue to work with our parents and talk. Um, and like Trent said, maybe Friday, there's a little bit more we can give. Uh, it's just kind of baby steps at this point and hoping that we can continue to, uh. Have our athletics this, this, uh, winter, our cheerleaders have been practicing since August. And their competition's not until the spring and, you know, bless their hearts, so we've got to keep this thing going.
Thanks very much, you guys. Um, if it, uh, so I believe this, in this reopen plan, unless the board wants to supersede anything different. Um, I think what this is right now is what the leagues decide to move forward with. Are established by the IHSA, so unless the board wants to prove any different guidelines. Than what they just talked about, I'd say we just continue with that piece, but I just added that, or board approved. So unless a board member wants to say anything, I'm going to move to the next. If anyone wants to say. It sounds like it to me, so.
Well, we could, the thing is, we could do something, but they've already basically threatened that if we do do something, nobody will play. There will be no competition for our kids.
See some spectators. Leagues work together to.
At least one man back.
Yeah.
Instead of just one.
Certainly, I guarantee every single.
Can we do cardboard people? I mean, they do do that in the major.
Okay, principals, cardboard. Okay, that, um, was, that's in the green, yellow and the orange under extracurricular, the same. Or board approved. In yellow, um, I did change, the bus transportation. Will be available with a goal. Of two students per seat. I added the goal because we have before a maximum and there are not enough drivers or buses on some routes, so I put a goal. Depending on bus traffic and driver's ability, we will do the best we can and the parents have signed waivers, so they should be aware of that. So that I added. Language wise, are we okay? Um, and then. The next one. Uh, that just said, and word of the board. Is, we did get updated guidance, I don't know if you read that, Court of Aid did approve that yesterday at their school district. So I put in the updated guidance to reduce the quarantine. And this was the exact language. I took away, even if you tested or feel healthy, I took away that sentence and put in this exact language right here, which I can read if you would like me to. I just want to point out this bolded italicized, that is the, um, recommendation, that was not in the CDC. Language, that is the nurse, the lead nurse in her team's recommendation. So. This is CDC says, however, based on local circumstances and resources and updated guidance to the reduced quarantine, the following options. Shorten quarantine are acceptable alternatives. In both cases, additional criteria, example, continued symptom monitoring and masking through day fourteen must be met. Quarantine can end after day ten without testing if no symptoms have been reported during daily monitoring. And when the diagnostic testing resources are sufficient and available. Quarantine can end after day seven if the diagnostic specimen test negative and no symptoms reported during daily monitoring. The nurses would like, like me adding written documentation of a negative PCR test because the rapid antigen tests are coming back with some false negatives. And false positives.
So are the PCR tests. Sixty percent failure rate, but, so I, the CDC doesn't specify it, so I don't think we.
Yeah, we can, I'm just wondering either what the nurse said.
Right.
Um, the specimen may be collected and tested within forty-eight hours before the time of quarantine. Cannot be discontinued early in case that, and I'm happy to take out. Take out or add or not put this in at all yet, it's totally up to, uh, the board.
Yeah, my only concern with that is that. We're sort of telling them, well, we don't believe you prove it to us. That's how I, I understand they want to make sure. Right, so they're, that, they're not getting somebody back that really is still sick. But I'm sure they have their reasons for that. That's, that's the only thing with it, it's just the documentation remaining.
Is that why they added that, because they have some concerns about people returning without a negative test?
I don't want to speak for them, but they, they, um.
This is a tough one.
Yes.
Tests are a hundred and twenty dollars if you don't have good insurance. So it's.
We do have the free, I'm sorry. Um, they, we have the new bulk tests that are the ones that we get to. The, all of our staff gets to spit and then UPS will come pick it up from us. Um, we have access in Nurse Judy just as putting in her order, I think yesterday. I, I don't, don't quote me, but it was, I think yesterday that she put in her order for, um, Brooke gave her the number of our certified staff. And I think she put the order in for that and they have, will be supplying that institute called, uh, Panhandle Health District called UPS and they will come to the schools and get the test.
And that will be available for no cost to students as well?
No, just staff.
Just the staff, so just to help the students, so I guess if I have a concern on it, it is that if you've got a hundred and twenty dollars or really great insurance. Then you can go back to school, if not, throw it up, and that's kind of frustrating, but. I understand where you guys are coming from, I can see both sides of it. Um, I, I really can, I mean, this is such a touchy situation where. It, it's really a no-win situation no matter how you look at it. I think that's common practice of having to provide a written test.
Jason, will you do me a favor, will you text Nurse Judy and see if students can be with the vote? I might be wrong on that, I don't want to say the wrong thing. I just saw him with his phone out, would you mind texting Nurse Judy and asking her? If that vote test covers staff and students or ju- might cover students as well and then that would cover.
Wouldn't that be great?
Yeah. Yes. Okay, see, I probably misspoke and she probably read it right now, so that'll be good.
Let me text her, she just sent me an email saying, are you seeing your email?
Okay, sorry, Nurse Judy, if I'm saying the wrong thing and Chrissy's going to text.
While we're waiting, should we continue or should we?
Yes, I would want to do that, thank you. Um, so then the other one down here is as part of the contact tracing protocols. The building principal and classroom teachers may be involved as appropriate, the reason this is important. Um, the association, uh, did another survey, um, and they had, uh. A lot of people replied that they didn't feel like we were doing the contact tracing as well as we could have. Um, I know that the nurses are going to be doing the absolute best they can. I, um, said that I will put one more step to my process, I'm going to put on step six. And if appropriate, if appropriate, I'm going to ask the building principal. And we talked about that today, the two building principals to get their perspective on it, I will have the building principals. Um, notify the custodian, not who the student was, but that that room needs to be froggy, we've got froggy machines. But the staff is giving us feedback that maybe the rooms aren't being identified to the custodians and there might be a communication breakdown. So we solved it today, the association and I, uh, the district leaders, we met and solved. So that we can help with contact tracing, classroom teachers would be notified, help with the contact tracing, so it's not just students. That are in the contact tracing and the principals would make sure that that room is disinfected and pawed. And we think that will help with the, uh, feedback from the staff.
On the other note, Nurse Judy just got back and she said, yes, it does cover that. She also wanted to clarify, including the CDC and the state that does require.
Okay, so when she says it covers that, is she saying that the students are, okay, but, but that test isn't. An approved test, so even though those tests are going to be available, they're not a PCR test.
They are. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And then they're sending them and, and UPS will take them and send them away, but it doesn't sign the media results, that's why people.
While we're talking about this one, I would like to say, unless you have some more to say? Okay, um. So there's been some emails about this. And I get it, I, like, I would be really frustrated if I wasn't, you know, Johnny says Kelly was around and Kelly wasn't, man. How frustrating, right, super frustrating, I hear you. And this is kind of. It's tough because here's what's our choices, right, we can keep this in-house. And keep it private, right, keep names private, keep, keep it that way. Or we can hand it all over to Panhandle Health and. And who knows?
We actually can't hand it over to them because they said they do not have the staff to do it anymore.
Right.
So every, just, all the districts that are in Panhandle Health have to do their own. Which we, we are doing. Exactly, so, so we don't really have a choice on that anymore.
All right, so it's this way.
So the piece I wanted to add, let me make sure, I mean, the piece I'm trying to add. Is in talking with staff and talking to parents that are frustrated, we believe this contact tracing will help if the classroom teacher. Is asked about it and not just students, before, um, the nurses didn't want to. Because of HIPAA, they didn't want to tell the teacher who in the, in the room had it, but we decided in talking with the district. Adding team and in talking with the teachers, that we need to, that is on a need-to-know basis as appropriate if it's in the classroom. And you can't decide, decipher it from the seating chart. Or in a bus on an extracurricular, then we are going to talk to the classroom teacher. So that an adult is the one that's helping with that, so that there, we're hoping there won't be as much frustration with parents. Does that make sense what I'm trying to say?
But I really do not understand, and I brought this up in the beginning.
Yeah.
Um, with respect to the fact that any student can name the other student. There is no protection of that student being named, so we're all worried over here about this student's. Protection, but we're completely ignoring the fact that we are not allowing a student a rightful education that they are guaranteed to have. And it really, really bothers me that, I mean, kids are kids and. The email that we did get brought up some very valid points that I seriously had several months back when I said, this isn't right. And I don't think it's appropriate to just say, well, you know, you were named, therefore bye-bye for fourteen days, you're out on your air. There has to be something else that can be agreed upon, whether it's permission from the child that's been. Diagnosed or permission from the parents for the child that's been diagnosed to say, hey, they've named so-and-so. We need to verify with so-and-so and we need to disclose the name. If they say no, then that child should not be excluded from school simply because Bobby says Johnny's been exposed. There has to be some fairness, some reasonableness to this contact tracing, not just the nurse saying, well, you were identified, so you're at the door. Which is the gist that I got in the email as to how it's being perceived and how it's being presented. Because. You can't protect one child and not the other. And I don't, I think the kids that we're just saying. Bye-bye to, we're not protecting them, we're not giving them the education they deserve, we're saying out the door and, you know. I, I have enough faith in the students because my girlfriend's son. Had an issue because he was actually part of a group that there was exposure to, but he wasn't identified. So he went and he took himself to the nurse and said, I was there, and she's like, go home, so he did. But he, he was forthcoming enough and honest enough. So to say that, you know, kids won't be, I think is, is misleading and wrong, because I do believe there's enough kids out there. That do take this seriously and hey, you know, he didn't name me, but yeah, I, maybe I should stay home or I'm feeling sick and I know he was expecting, I mean. There has to be more to this than just the nurse saying, you were identified, go home.
Yeah, that's why we're hoping that this will help to have the classroom teacher be the person that's saying. Here's where I pause our, here were people that were within six feet for more than fifteen minutes and the adult. Mr. Bradbury, you are on the same.
Judy's, Judy must be on, she, she's here and she said that, uh. She said that's not, we don't take any students for it at all, that's the start of the process and then we do a lot of investigation.
Is there any cameras in the rooms?
Uh, no, we only have. Yes, but we only had fifty-one or.
Sure.
Um, I, I, I think it goes back to this is a hard situation, you said, this is, it's almost like a no-win and I hate to say that out loud. But it is a very hard situation because people on both sides. I've had people, you've had people email saying, my kid is left out, they've been identified and they knew they weren't around. And then I've got other people saying, my kid, same thing you just said, my kid was not even identified, you're not doing the contact tracing, right? Like, I have both spectrums and this is definitely a hard issue. I think in trying to, we're trying to get better every time, I know it keeps bringing changes every single meeting. But I feel like as part of the contract tracing, if the nurses start with, who were you around, they look at the seating chart, they look at the pods. Then they talk to the adults, which would be the principal and that classroom teacher, we weren't doing that before. If we do that as the adult, we were told we couldn't do that because of HIPAA, but today we decided that we were putting, well, it wasn't today, we decided this one, I did this last week. Is that I, I really have to get more to a closer of getting an adult involved, that's what this sentence is about. So I'm hoping it'll address, better address exactly what you're saying, and it's not going to be perfect, but I do feel like this will help. If this part, if we can approve this part. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because I'm getting a lot of emails of people frustrated. And if I was appearing to somebody that got out for fourteen days, and I'm like, no, I promised they weren't, that would really get very frustrating.
I can see where they're coming from yet, I can also see where if they have a suspicion that someone was exposed to it. That would be negligent to expose that kid to a bunch of other kids, so, so what do you do? I mean, it's really, I don't even know what the solution is, you know what, if someone has an awesome solution, or, like, really, that's, I mean, right?
Right, but my struggle is just going and telling a student or their parents, your son was exposed. Not telling you by whom, not giving you a chance to defend yourself, not giving you the ability to say. I wasn't there and be received as being honest. That's where I struggled because. I, I, it's, it's not, yeah, it's, it's not an appropriate approach to resolving the whole. Keeping the exposure to a minimum, so.
And that's why we think this will help, so hopefully this will, yeah, hopefully it's to work, one for this part, I think it will be helpful. And it also will help with the foggy to the classrooms that, um, teachers really had a concern about, that they weren't disinfecting the classrooms where there was a case, maybe so. And we think this will help as well, so this one sentence I think will help us on the other front.
So to the parents, let's try this for a little bit, work with us on this for a little bit. And then let's reassess in, in a month or so and see where we're at.
At January, that, the January.
Yeah, yes, okay, let's go back to Nurse Judy and, well, now that we've gotten Nurse Judy's answer, sorry, I don't mean to box you around. All right, thank you. So let's see, the written documentation of a negative PCR test and Nurse Judy was the one that was saying that that's required by Panhandle Health, but. We're our own board and we can do what we need to do, now, I don't want to make Nurse, you know, Nurse Judy's job more difficult. And if we're providing a PCR test at no cost. I guess I don't see where that's a problem unless somebody has an issue with taking a test like I would. But I just wouldn't test, I'd stay home for two weeks, and so, um.
Or in this case, maybe it's. If you have symptoms.
Yeah, that's true.
At least it shortens the quarantine. At least it shortens the quarantine.
Yes.
And I think that written documentation is valid if you want to come in, back in and set the base because, I mean, it's just.
You'd have to do it at a job, so what's wrong with doing it at school? Yes. I agree, Rob.
I think that's, I don't think that's added, I think that's just kind of expanding on the fact that, you know, you have to provide, you know, a negative test after day seven. Well, how, how are you doing? You had a negative test.
Trustee Gristle, I know you had an issue with that, what are your thoughts?
I'm, I'm willing to do whatever makes Nurse Judy's job easier to tell you the truth because I know that she has, yeah. You know, and I do appreciate everything she does, I just don't, like, having to prove you're not lying before you, it's like being accused before you ever. And, and that's just the way, you know, there I am, there's my landmines right there.
But in defensive terms, when I was tested, I had to have that test because I had to turn it to the university, I had to turn it to my internship, I had to show everybody, look, I have to be out for everybody's sake, safety and because I'm dying. So, you know. You're dying for a few hours, but this is true, you were born to die. You're right, very much so. So anyhow. I think we're good with it.
So are we good with this?
Yeah.
All right. Down, then the last thing is only this, I don't know if it was, I think that it was the only things we had. So that's on for the board approval later and that was the last thing on my case. Thank you all very much for your patience. I thought it was gonna be quick.
Oh, you should know by now.
So now we're on patron input and then the action items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Okay. So we don't have any official statements. We didn't see a lot of them, we didn't see a lot of them. Hopefully, as you know, we can, you know, but right now, I think the important thing is keeping those kids in those extra activities at the moment. Okay, on to action items. That's the consent agenda, we have the minutes in the previous meeting, the action items and the ready introduction bills. Are we okay just to put that in a block?
That's fine with me.
Yeah, I didn't have any questions. I didn't have any questions, no.
Chairman Homestead, it appears as though the school nurses would like to speak. It's up to you, but they have emailed Chrissy that they would like to speak, so. I already talked to Nurse Judy about it ahead of time, but it looks like another nurse wants to speak.
You want to go with going back?
Yeah.
Sure.
The only issue I have is they may be on their cell phones and I don't know which one they are, so.
Okay, can we have a motion to do the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented. I'll second that.
Have a motion second, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Bring that motion here. How close are we, Chrissy, you think?
She says, yes, please. Okay, putting track down.
Because the next one is the Paul Reo plan that I'm talking to.
So what's your speaking to? So.
Oh, I see. I did talk to Nurse Judy ahead of time and got her input on, so.
I do think it's fair and reasonable that the teacher involved gets involved.
I do too.
Because they shouldn't be privy to the students in their class anyway.
I didn't realize that if a student was in your class and was tested positive, you weren't informed as the teacher.
That that was, I mean, all different.
Yeah. Because they've had exposure, so, I mean, but.
And oftentimes they can clarify all the things.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just that they're gonna figure out who it is by who's not coming back. I mean, it's always gonna take a long time to figure out.
I'll get some.
So by telling him, it just, you know, it speeds the process along.
Not on the, okay, so let's just, let's just go on.
I gave you, Nurse Judy's gave some feedback for that before I sent it to her, Nurse Judy to approve it before it went to the board.
Can the nurse call in?
I might, am I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, awesome. This is Judy.
Hi, Nurse Judy.
Hello.
Hi, everybody. So I, I'm willing to answer questions or any information that you would like. A couple of things, the, the Panhandle Health just sent out today and I sent it to Dr. Meyer, the revised isolation guidance that originally started with CDC, has gone down through the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare and then to Panhandle Health and then it is, was sent out to all of the superintendents and school nurses in our area. And just a couple of things, it does, it's, it's basically going over the, the 10-day close contact quarantine and the seven-day close contact quarantine if the person has received a negative test. It does very specifically say that the testing molecular test, which is a PCR test, and that it needs to be collected no sooner than day five of isolation. And that's just because, so that there's enough of the viral load to be able to detect the virus at day five. And isolation can end only after the negative test is available, but no earlier than day seven. So there's some very specific things in this document that was sent out to us from Catherine Hoyer, who is, I believe, the media person at Panhandle Health, is that correct, Dr. Meyer?
Yep, and I do have that piece in there, Nurse Judy.
Okay, perfect. And then the other thing that I just wanted to speak to was the contact tracing itself. I think I spoke to this the last time I was there. It's, it's really important to understand that when we do call and make contact with someone who is named as a close contact, we're typically talking to the parents. A lot of the time, particularly with older children, older students, we have the student on the line also. And we, we really interview them and ask them specifically about who they have had contact with, what looks like, what the definition is, where did this happen, what day did it happen? And we also then will contact teachers, we will contact coaches, we will contact other people and just to make sure that when we are identifying somebody as close contact, that we're really trying to make sure that that close contact really did occur. I, I certainly am not going to lead you to believe that it's 100%, but I think we do a pretty darn good job of that. And by doing that, by protecting the person who's positive just because of confidentiality. So I, I don't know if that helps kind of clarify that for, I can't remember who had the question about that.
I think I addressed it, Nurse Judy.
Pardon me?
I think you addressed, you addressed that. Jason, you addressed the question, so it was.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you clarifying all that.
Oh, no problem. And, you know, I mean, sometimes parents do give us permission. I have had, I don't care if you say who my child is. And, you know, if that does occur, then, then we will do that. But again, we, we really are trying to, you know, abide by the laws of HIPAA and FERPA and, you know, and just protect the, the privacy of the person that has tested positive.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Nurse Judy. I hope you have a great night.
Thanks. Do you guys have any other questions?
I'm, I'm good. Thank you for all the information.
Thank you, Nurse Judy. Okay, so on action items, so we're pretty complete with the 90 updates to be, like, with specific 27 to Paul Reo plan.
I'd like to approve the updates to the, to all group.
I'll second that. Aye. You want to vote? Bring that up. Next, Brian, he has the word for the resolution of the March 9th.
So, I don't know, it's up here, it is in your board packet.
I think scroll down. Yeah.
So Brian, if you place all the three dots to your right, you can go full screen.
So the resolution, we, there's, in both the resolution and official ballot, there's some people who think that has to be there, make sure that we're following code. So we do work with a, we're bond counsel, we call it bond counsel, but they're attorneys with probably Troxall. Generally, the one attorney who worked with, often she's actually, it's an Idaho firm, most stationed Boise, but they have Danielle Quay, who is a Portland resident, who often helps cities and counties and school districts in our area. So I work with Danielle remotely, also her team and on the, you know, making sure that where there's any changes in law that were, you know, done in our office across the country is to make sure we're legal, we're always sent for the county clerk. So the resolution has been edited through that firm. The numbers, as far as, some of the language has changed by law. So on the resolution, when it says the estimated annual cost to the tax credit, that's new. I believe that language came into, happened to be for bonds a few years ago and then the legislature, this last session or the session before, added for not just bonds, but also levies. So that calculation, you know, is, you know, specific just in supplemental, so like in our tax bill, it's that 210, they don't see on the bill because it's a common issue, it's supplemental on the plan. That, but the law also allows us to put a little additional language to try to give perspective to the voters because obviously that is the cost, but we have a levy that's expiring. So it's not an add, there's something can not, or something can not be replaced on that. So we work to, to let the taxpayers know that, you know, the, the supplemental levy at the vow, the assessed value in the district today, that's what you have to go by, you have to go by the snapshot in time. We know that when they actually collect the levy, our assessed value is going to be different, likely it's going to be greater and will be, so that rate will be different. But the law says, what is it today? And so if we took the 9.520 levy by the current assessed value, it would be 210. Then we're additionally able to say on, maybe it's 2.27. Yes, 2.22. Our current levy, 8.9, it's 210, same value. But, you know, I did say that your bonds collections are going down. We add that to let them know that, you know, the overall tax rate, that we're going to be keeping things, we believe, you know, flat or won't go up. In fact, we know the rates will go down if we keep having assessed value, this assumes no assessed value. But, so we're able to say addition, district collects a bond level, it's going to decrease by $10 per 100,000 of assessed value as we keep reducing our bonds. The attorney, you know, collaborating not just with myself, but also went to Piper Sandler or Karen Ger and asked him to confirm numbers because they're putting their stamp of approval on it and they want to make sure we're active for our patrons. So that information was verified and so this is the language that we came, of course, you know, if you wanted any edits, there's something we, you know, we can do, but this is that what the ballot would actually look like for the yes or the no vote. And then the other language that's in here is just what we believe. Typical for only Glock.
Yeah, it's pretty.
I read, yeah, I read through the whole thing, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, they're pretty simple, they don't change much year to year. You know, it's just, you never know if they're gonna do law or new.
Right.
Maybe IDA, but it keeps going on, make sure that you're following the, the latest guidance, so we will put counsel on that. But, you know, this is what would be there and if we approve this tonight, the resolution would go to the county. I'm not here for any questions for.
I don't have any, just to make sure you're not big question mark after December 8th. If we approve tonight, which I'm sure we will be, but since, keep going down a little bit further. Yep, right there, adopted by the board of trustees.
Oh, is this supposed to say?
And it should say December 10th. So we will.
Or we'll.
Right. So if you make the, the motion that to approve.
Right.
The resolution with the edits as noted.
Yeah.
We'll make that once and for all. Okay, thank you.
We don't want a question, we think we approved.
We gotta stay. We're gonna stay on work, right?
It's a 2020.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for the supplemental levy election with the edit of removing the question mark and approve, approve it with the edits.
Motion second, anyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to vote? Bring that motion here. Next is to approve the 90 raise in front of the Congress. I'll make a motion to approve to waive the senior project requirement for the online video high school program for the 2020, 2021 school year.
I'll second that.
Have a motion second, anyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to vote? Bring that motion here. Next is to approve the 94 board, the bid to lose was also here for purchase of two new buses. Three more. Brian, who go over there.
I didn't have any questions. I gotta find with the numbers.
Oh, I do have a quick question. Sorry. Is there going to be any, because I, I think there was prior and then there was the whole that we weren't on the, on the ball because, anyway, is there COVID money for this at some point in time or, because it wasn't there for buses, but we missed.
We, you could have used the COVID monies, a couple districts.
Okay.
Used the COVID money for a bus purchase, but they must have had like the buses in order or be able to get them.
Okay.
Delivered before March.
Okay, okay.
Because the COVID, like the governor's money, you have to order by now and you have to physically have it by March. So perhaps if they had something ready by September, August, they could.
Okay.
That's, yeah, I mean.
So bottom line, there's no COVID.
There's no COVID money for this, no. Perfect. So really, it's the, we get a bus depreciation money from the state. They, they give us a little bit of dollars for all my, all of our buses that are less than 12 years old. They, if we buy a bus for $100,000, they give us $85,000. They don't give us the full value. And that $85,000 spread over 12 years. And so when we have a bus pass 12 years, really imperfect room, get rid of that bus that we're not getting any more revenues from it. But we have some buses. Regardless, so we get some of those dollars, it's about $100,000, $150,000 here, plus we get our plant levy, we take $225,000 more that we've been with that since the plant was passed and that's helping us purchase buses. So last year we got four buses, this year. and that's helping us purchase buses. So, last year, we got four buses, this year, the dollars available is quite as much, so we'll run free next year, we'll probably build up a little bit.
How old are the buses that we're treating?
Uh, the ones we have, they are, one might be actually the previous century, I, well, maybe not yet.
All right.
The others, uh, the other ones are, aren't quite that old.
Okay.
Most of them all have literally over, like, three hundred thousand miles.
Okay, great, thank you.
Well, so we have two great weekends, really good weekends, we're very lovely and good with, yeah.
Wonderful, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve to award bid to the lowest responsible bidder for the purchase of three new school buses.
Starting the motion.
The motion is second, anyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to vote? Bring that motion here.
When we go back, um, to number two with our resolution, we want a motion of second, but, um. We need to do a little more of a follow-up. All right. Sorry, so we're going to underline a little bit, and I'm going to do a quick poll call vote after we have a motion from trustee Prissom and a second, then trustee Ayers. So, trustee major.
Yes, trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Prissom.
Yes.
Trustee Ayers.
Terminal. Thank you, I'm sorry. Okay, next is, uh, to approve the ninety-fourth bid to load this off the year for the purchase of one for the classroom.
And if you want us to bring up anything from the past, uh, presentation, then you can put into your work packet, the bids that came in.
I do believe there's.
On the bid?
Well, on the informational summary, we have a small Excel box that says, "Brian Sales and Service, um, of one seventy-four, one forty." So, I think it's supposed to be US modulars, is that correct?
Yeah, US modular was, came with a low.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure which was which, and then I realized that on the bus, it was, so I see where that, like, similar errors. No, 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 that's fine, I just.
I thought they were, had a subsidiary, really.
You'd never know.
Yeah, they just take those old bus frames, and then they goes a modular.
Mobile, yeah, US modulars from Boise, um, we've never, I've never, had other districts work with firm, but, maybe, you can see there, you know, that we, I put out the, the bid saying that we're bidding on, you know, up to two. So, we, we have the option for that, but we don't, we're not obligated, uh, and so that's why I asked for a price for one, not knowing, well, maybe that we are, second this one, but both firms just gave the price, the same price for both modules, and, um, you know, delivery and installation of, of the ramp. You know, we made sure that it had the snow load appropriate for Spirit Lake. And there was a couple of small options we had for approval for us, that we could accept or, or not. And, but, that's sort of the costs, there would also be some site costs that we, but, you know, if you remember where, in the south part of the building, which was, I think, on the board, micro, that it costs on that, it's approximately twenty-five thousand dollars to do that work. Um, we also have to bring power and data, and the power from Vista, actually, to go to the laptop would have been almost thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars. I think it would be less if we put it on the south part, because that's where they bring in the main service of the building, so they won't have to turn it across the road in front of, in relation to the high school. So, we will save some costs on that, if you're on the south end, so, you know, questions? Or, we move forward with one, or with two, we move forward with zero. And, you know, any questions, but, oh, you know, there's, you know, method specifications and all that, so we recommend that. If you decide to go with one or more, that would be according to what.
Um, is, how significant of an impact to the plant facilities fund would it be to do two as opposed to one?
Well.
Because I don't have the budget up, so I.
Oh, for the budget, we, I mean, it certainly, we have the dollars and we can afford to do that, but then there would be other projects that we're not, I guess.
That I, that I, I would, I mean, this is my recommendation in talking to principals, looking at the enrollment that's moving up from Spirit Lake and Apple, um, and looking at our plant facility, we just went through it, our district leaders, all of the next two years worth of plant facility levies and the projects that Mr. Ferriola and Mr. Wallace have lined out. And in my perspective of knowing what we've done for the last five years and what we have for the next two years, I would recommend at this point that we just get one portable with two classrooms, because there's not a discount at this point to get two portables. I don't believe we need more than the two classrooms right now, and that would be physically responsible to just get the one. If we need to add the other the next year, we certainly can, so that fits to that. Mr. Wallace already drew us a picture of how that would look, it's actually, it's a look there, um, right there. That would be my recommendation, because I believe there are some boilers, and there are some carpet projects, and there are some roofing projects, and there are some things that I think would take precedent, um, over us putting a second portable, and there's no discount from that.
That's my, when we do the site work, would we prep for two?
Yeah, we would do the, yeah, if we're going to have them come in, we would, uh, you know, get the ground under the compactation for the largest, um, space we could.
Okay.
There, we'd also, it's been involved, if there wasn't going to be a second one there, no chance.
Okay.
So, we would, we would do that work also, to have a big enough space. The plan is, you know, one mod, the modular will go lengthwise, and then we'd have a sidewalk that is in.
In between the two.
So, if a second one came, it would go there and it connected to the same sidewalk.
Right.
So, there's no real reason to, I mean, we could actually asphalt the wall back there if we really wanted to. You get a building on top, we're not using, I mean, I think that's just sort of. I, yeah, I, I mean, it looked nice, but I don't know if it's really worth.
But this isn't permanent anymore, I mean, eventually, we're going to have to build that, any, we're going to have to build out of that school only, if it grow. So, why, I mean, if anything, I say we do it well, prep it like we would if we were going to build out. You know what I mean, like, the ground, you know what I mean, whatever prep needs to be done, let's do double duty there, but, anyway, that's for another discussion.
But certainly, we definitely want, where the, the kids and staff are coming out of the building, to go into the main building that, you know, will come off the stairs of the ramp, we want to come right onto, especially in the winter, onto a sidewalk or, not ground.
Yeah, sure, something that's.
So, there'll be a little, yeah, exactly. So, we'll do that, and connect.
Okay.
Certainly. All right, wonderful.
Yeah, I think we should go with one, two, I'm not thrilled about portables. Last year's.
Yeah.
Not everywhere tight at all.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, it, it suits the needs. Yeah, it, it's going to suit the needs.
My only concern is growth, and moving, um, allocating all the sixth graders to, to creating true middle schools, and then it's two classrooms sufficient to support that growth.
And, and I think that's also, prepping it for two is smarter, because the equipment's there, it's going to be costly.
Right.
So, I would, I would like to, you know, spend as little money as possible, hoping that we, at some point, can expand, just for the security of the.
Correct, correct.
But still, if we do have an explosion, it's not going to cost us any more than to bring another building.
Right, okay. I get what you're saying.
I like.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect.
Do you have a question? Okay, so, um, with this one, we need to, when we approve, when we have a motion to, so approve to award bid to the most responsible bidder, designate, you want to designate just for one. Correct, that's my. Yeah.
So, I would move to approve to award bid and most responsible bidder for the purchase of one module of class, as for that.
I'll second that.
The motion is second, everyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to, you want to vote? Bring that motion here.
You know, I think, I'm, I will.
Trustee Ayers is going to COVID. He has to be working, he's a while.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming here.
Good to see you.
Yeah, there I am.
You take care.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
All of them Merry Christmas.
Yes.
It's all factors.
Thank you, Bronny.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next is to approve the ninety-fourth policy thirty twenty on student records. Uh, we didn't have the edits recommendations. Any questions, anything new?
I'll make a motion to approve the update to policy thirty twenty enrollment attendance records as presented.
I'll second that.
The motion is second, anyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to vote? Bring that motion here. Next is to approve the ninety-fourth policy thirty-five seven, student records. Uh, this was an easy statute change, there was no recommended edits at this meeting. New. I'll make a motion to approve update to policy thirty-five seven, student record.
I'll second that.
The motion is second, anyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to vote? Bring that motion here. Next is to approve the ninety-fourth policy forty-one six, service animals in school. Uh, there's no recommended edits, but first you can check with other districts, uh, because we talked about moving it to the front area in our policy. ISBA, which is a big project, and other districts can ask, you're starting, where it should go, ISBA, ISBA, yeah. Recommend it's keeping it down in communities, so that we don't have to have another policy to cover our community members. They say this broad enough for both community and schools, other districts also have to start. Questions?
No.
Yes.
So, we, sir.
So, we're going to make a report once we do.
Yeah.
Kind of a motion.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the update to policy forty-one sixty, service animals in schools.
I'll second that. Motion is second, anyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to vote? Bring that motion here. Next is to approve, I have a motion with the district point, ensuring my own calls from board chair, twenty to zero. This is all on here, because we discussed this at the last board meeting. Um, I contacted ISBA, we were kind of surprised that this wasn't already being done, or, I mean, that she was surprised that the calls didn't already go through the superintendent for this. And, and we also thought we recovered her policy for, uh, staff purchases, which it sounds like we're not, that we need something more specific for board. So, that's why, um, there'll be a policy, um, coming to discuss, uh, spending funds for the district attorney. Um, if, we, we don't have to go on this tonight, um, because there will be a new board chair on January, so if you want to wait, think about it. Um, but ISBA does recommend that, um, any use of taxpayer funds has to go through the superintendent of board chair. Usually, she said it always goes to the superintendent, but, uh, you can maybe go through the board chair, so.
Sure, I moved a table until, uh, January three.
I agree with that. Trustee, you do have a second?
Yes, I said.
There's a motion is second, table signed from January, anyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to vote? Bring that motion. These are coming out. Uh, so, again, this was the, uh, recommendation from ISBA for the pursuit of the policy for the district attorney. And this being.
I mean, because ISBA doesn't have a policy for this.
Correct.
I talked to Karen at ISBA, I was wanting to make sure the board had it, I got ahold of them, but, to ask if there was a policy in their giant manual that you have to scroll through, that I had missed, and she said, no, what I had, I recommend that. And then I think we're on the same conversation.
I understand where you guys are, know where you're coming from on this, I don't necessarily agree with it. I do agree that something should be brought up amongst us all, and that we should be able to have a discussion about that. Usually, if it would involve something legal, it would be in an executive session, but I don't think the time counts for the board members and not allowing them to contract an attorney, if they feel like they need to, I don't think that's right. So, I, frankly, I'm not going to, um, vote to approve this, that's just me, so, that's my stance on it.
Well, it's not really saying you can't contact the district to let somebody know, because you're spending taxpayer dollars, that's.
Sure.
That's really, that's what we're concerned, is the spending of taxpayer dollars, because we are not staff. Staff has to have a period of four, six winters, we don't owe them all their staff, so there's, you know, guidelines saying that you, you just don't want to have a pretty rank with the taxpayer.
Which I understand, and I think that that's definitely responsible, because nobody wants taxpayer dollars to be flipped up and spent, that's not, that's not what any of us are here for. And so, I do think that there does need to be some responsibility, and I think that that would be definitely addressed, like I had mentioned before, when we all discussed it openly with one another in an executive session or whatever, but if somebody felt like they needed to contact legal counsel, I guess I don't feel like it is appropriate for someone to have to go get permission to do that, when they are a board member, especially when they're getting permission from someone who is, um, their only employee. You know, no, no offense to you or anything like that, I just think that, that is, um, that's backwards to me, and I don't agree with that, so.
Next, we have, we have the policy fifty-seven forty rejection force, there's a lot of the next.
Yeah, so, and Mr. Brander is here also, and we do have, uh, the other members, um, the Sexton, Dr. Pasley, and Chris Garzad, and Laura Spurway are on, if you have any questions, um, I can bring it up, if, if you, you have it on there, if there's any questions. I think it's important to note that this has been several, they started this conversation before I even beat to the district in this, my fifth year. So, they had had this conversation, they got put on hold, and then it got brought up again my first year, and, and then it got put on hold, because we didn't ever need it. Then, when it came up, um, with our discussions, uh, last spring, we said, we better get back on this again, and get back to the why of it, and then we went through, we embedded it through the, um, teachers' association, we embedded it through all the administrators, and then the other staff had an opportunity to weigh in. Uh, so, if the board has any, um, questions on it, I'm happy to answer. Um, but I think it's important that people know that we have gone through a vetting process, that other people have. And we did a clean version, we have the current version, we, I asked, uh, Christine, should you please do the clean version, because it's kind of really hard to see otherwise.
No.
This is, this was not a policy committee, because this was started even before I got here, and the majority of the work was done already. We just, honestly, in the spring, remember, we had this discussion in the spring, like, what if we do? We just honestly, in the spring, remember, we had this discussion in the spring, like, what if we do have to do a RIF? And that was started a discussion, so we brought it back together, did final edits on it, made sure everybody didn't have any final things, and this really was already in place. A lot of it was in place before I even got here.
The nice part about it too, like.
Please do.
When Becky got here, Dr. Meyer got here her first year, she talked to all of us and decided that, you know, we were really close to finalizing, she liked the draft that we had. So she got, we called the Lincoln's Cabinet together, and there were two, two people from each group in our district, as well as Dr. Myers. We all talked about it for a series of weeks and got it put together, so. It was also, it was taken by, there was a lot of deliberation and conversation, and changing and fighting, and, and so the product we ended up coming back to was pretty good. We just didn't finalize it, something came up back then, I, I think there was some staffing issues that kind of took precedence, or emergency staff issues, or things like that, so we really got together and then. Yeah, we just got back to it, you know.
In the district I came from, they did a RIF every single year. It was a very intricate process, several steps, and there was, because it needed to be staffed, was reduced every single year. When I came here, they've never had a, a RIF ever in this district. So it kind of was a back burner thing, because it wasn't like forefront, and I was like, what do you mean, you don't have a RIF policy? We've got it done. And so it really, they had started, it put it on pause, it got put on pause again, and we just said, with all of the Covid and the LOA and everything, we really do need to get that done. And so that, it really is things that they'd already started working on, and we just kind of finalized it. Made sure, checked the legal pieces of it, ran it up the chain, and this is what everyone's agreed to try to adopt. So it's just the first read. I have sent it to the board two weeks in a row to review and let me know. I haven't received any questions, and I hope people have questions they wanna ask down in the open meeting. Or if you want me to gather more information, come back to the board.
Well, my, my biggest concern in reading the proposal is it implies that the decisions are being made for RIF by the district leadership and the LEA team, and then they're being brought to the board. That is backwards. According to statute, the decision to institute a reduction in force and the selection of an employee or employee subject to such reduction shall be at the sole discretion of the Board of Trustees.
Right.
So it bothers me that we're putting practices in place that is taking our responsibilities away. I did review our old policy, which didn't necessarily put the cart into the horse, so to speak. And then I reviewed ISBA's policy, to which they have a policy, and then they also have procedures. So I really think that we need to go back to where it is in the board's hands, because that is one of our school responsibilities. And I do think, given the format, which ISBA also has some of the. They have the, the layout, the layout, similar to what has been presented here, the criteria measures, that we would have procedures, a key policy, along with 5740.
Yeah. So I will tell you that what you said is not the intention. We, we are not trying to put the court before the horse, but the board is always looking to the association and the leadership to work together to come with some organized fashion to present a list. But if you look at number eight, the board determines that a RIF will in fact be implemented, the superintendent shall submit a list of the teachers recommending for release to the board. It's always still the board's discretion, but we are just recommending that we go through a process so that you have a list.
I hear you have a guideline or areas, and I don't mean to cut you off, but under the guidelines, number one, it states all RIF decisions will take place between district leadership and LEA leadership teams, with the central focus remaining. So the implication under the guidelines, number one, is that the board's not included. Once again, we're being brought to it at the.
Yeah, so then that was our fault for, for stating it that way, that was not the intention. All RIF discussions will take place ahead of time. All we're trying to do is help give the board the intention of this, and we can certainly change the wording, but I just don't want the intention of it to be misconstrued. The intention of this entire policy, and we've spent a lot of time working on it, is we know it's the board's decision, but the board does not want to go out and say, we wanna review you, you, and you. We wanted to have, we were trying, thinking that when we brought this to you, we'd be saying, great, you guys have this. In number two, you have voluntary resignations, retirements, transfer to this team, leave of absences, which are all things. And then, if there's not a number of people to keep, to create the RIF list, then, look, you're trying to use some educational factors to look at, and let's go through this rubric. So we are just trying to help, we understand it's the board, all of us understand it's the board's decision.
The board, the board will tell us that we need to rip.
Right.
We are in a position where there's no money, we, our current budget, the way it is, we're gonna have to do it ourselves. So then, then, once you guys decide that, then it comes to this process.
And then you still make final recognition, but if we misrepresented that process, that is not the intention of this whatsoever. So I just don't want it to go on to any sort of record that we are trying to insert boards worry, because if somehow this misconstrued it, what we, what, what the intention, and we can certainly, I would love to have input on what you would recommend for the wording. But what we're trying to say is, if the board says that there's a, it needs to be a RIF, then the board's saying, okay, give us a list of how you prioritize, because it comes down to, and I lived with this, I lived with this for 23 years, of every year going through this process. And it has to be very particular, and the board doesn't wanna be the one to say, we're gonna pick you, 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 and you. So that's why these, all of these things right here, that we are trying to help work, work together to prioritize based on these things, or if you're teaching or learning things, and then bring a list to you. And then the board would say, okay, this is how many people we have to rip, we can see the priority, we agree with that, and that's, this is the board's piece that we're asking for, if you agree with these, this rubric of how we come up with the list. Then, then it, we are saying that the HR will basically tell people, and that we're also recommending people keep checking their personnel file. But it really is the board's, the one that indicates that there's a necessity for RIF, and the board is the one that approves that final list. So I'd be happy to have, if you have suggestions, or any of the board have suggestions on the wording, so that it doesn't appear as though it's back to the part before the horse. We can certainly move, like, number eight up to number one, saying that if the board decides, and these are the steps that they will have the association and the leadership team go through, and then come back to the board in, from first to eighth. Like, have the eighth one go at the beginning, and then have it wrap up at the end with the board, I think is what I hear you saying.
Well, just in reviewing it, it seemed that the board was so far removed from this policy, and it is one of our sole responsibilities. And yet, I looked at the old policy, and the board was, it was very apparent, it is a board's, you know, responsibility. Then I read ISBA, it's a board responsibility, and then there's a procedure.
Reassessing that part of the old.
Yeah, and maybe there's.
In there to start this whole process, and then, and then go.
Let's massage this. I'm sorry, I apologize. Let's massage this a little.
Yeah.
We're not trying to do anything, I just, all massages, we all feel good about.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what needs to happen, is we all need to agree, and just the converse, just the fact that this is coming up for conversation is very healthy. I like that, that's what needs to happen.
Yeah.
And so I really like that we're all able to discuss this and talk about it without anybody having a bunch of emotion. This is fabulous.
Yeah, it's all about checks and balances.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why it's worse decision to tell us through the RIF, that way a superintendent can't come in here and say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna save a bunch of money, we're just gonna rip a bunch of people.
Yeah.
It has to be a collective group, you guys decide as a board, okay, we're gonna rip, you tell the superintendent, this is probably what we're gonna be looking at, and then we go into our.
See, I think we maybe just cut too much out of that, what we're trying to streamline, see how it says the first sentence, if the Lincoln Joy School District Board receives vote that a reduction in force is required, and no nutrition will not address it, following guidelines and move it will be followed. And I think that's where Trustee Thompson's talking about the protocol, so maybe we just need to beat that up a little bit more in the beginning.
Whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do it together, like we've done in the past on some stuff.
Yeah.
Let's go through it and do it together, does everybody feel pretty good about that?
Yeah.
Sure.
I'm gonna be stuck with all those things in my head.
Yeah, that's perfect. And again, it's the first, first time I'm giving it, so that's, I need to. Further information about that is great.
Hopefully, if Mr. Wallace does his job, we're gonna have to get that.
Yeah.
No pressure or anything.
No pressure, yeah.
Sorry.
The last thing on this discussion item was if we had, if anyone, Trustee Thompson, you had talked about volunteers in the school, I think you addressed it earlier, but if there's anything further to talk about on, for that, for the, the volunteers in the schools, we certainly could entertain that.
Well, no, just as long as, I mean, we're keeping in line with the color code that we're in, and not just arbitrarily deciding that volunteers can't be part of our program. I know where our boundaries were set in the beginning. And then, as Mr. Derek stated, apparently the booster club comes in and films for the basketball games. So to me, I mean, and like I had discussed with you, if we are eliminating volunteers, we need to eliminate it, you know, laterally in every school, so.
Because there are some parent volunteers that sell popcorn at one of the elementary schools, I found out.
Well, you know, I, I have no problem with that. However, if we're going to start selectively decreasing volunteers, we can't do that. It must be in the class.
Right, absolutely. I think, I think we did address that once we talked, I think that once I put out to the principals, then that was.
Okay.
Further. And then we talked about extra teachers, so I think we're good with all of that. Then, okay.
Anything else? We're good.